Thank you, Eric. I can hear you.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Neighborhood Commission meeting to order. This is April 22nd, 2024 meeting. I'd like to start by going over very briefly the rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. And we'll take public testimony on each agenda item. So at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to silence all of their electronic device. Device? So first item on the agenda, I'd like to call boss order and have the rule. Rule call, please.
Rinaldo.
Here.
Chair. Clark.
Here.
Bone. Valandra.
Valandra. I mean, I see you're here, yeah. You're just muted.
Oshiro.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Smith.
Here.
Tom Almoto.
Present.
Awesome. We have seven. Chair, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is public concerns. Do we have any public concerns that anyone wants to raise this evening?
The first one was Kevin Lai.
Yeah, I see two hands. Kevin Lai, you have.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question about the propriety of the meeting tonight. I did notice that there was a difference in the mailing that came from NCO about this meeting and its agenda and the minutes in the email that was sent from noreply@Honolulu.gov, whereas typically we see information coming from the webmaster. So that led me to look at the city and county of Honolulu scheduling page, which doesn't show any meeting listed for this evening on the 22nd, I believe. So I just want to make sure this has been formally registered with the city and county or to the governor's office, either of which would, I think, satisfy sunshine law. And then secondly, do we know if moving forward, we will revert back to a process whereby the emails that are sent will include links to the PDF versions of the meeting agenda and the previous month's written record? And then thirdly, I don't see on the new, the revised NCO website, any record of the amended written record for the previous month that may have been made during last month's meeting. Maybe it's there, but I knew there's a new format. Maybe we'll get comments about that from the secretary down the road. But those are my questions, Chair, mainly about the propriety of the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, we can ask about this city clerk.
Okay, I don't know if anybody else had any problem seeing the agenda or the minutes. I don't think I did. But Lloyd or anyone who addressed concerns raised by Mr. Lai, can you be aware of any?
Hey, Kevin. Dylan Buck here. As usual, we sent our copies of the agenda to the city clerk's office, which is where they post on the city's website. We'll double check on that, but I have proof of my message to them. So that's unusual. And then reverting to webmaster, we'll look into that. But yeah, it is a new website. It's supposed to be very similar to our other site. But that's the first time I heard that you got the new address from noreply@Honolulu.gov. So thanks for sharing. We'll get back to you. And your last one was, you said the minutes from the last meeting that were amended and approved. You did not see them on our website yet?
Yes, but if that was the February minutes approved during the March meeting, maybe they are there. I'll double check. Again, the difficulty, I think, was that there was no direct link to the PDF files within the email that was sent out, as per usual.
All right. Thank you. We'll check back on that.
Thank you.
Next one was Greg Masakian.
Greg Masakian. Mr. Masakian, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just lowering my hand. Thank you. Aloha, Chair and members of the commission. There's a few things I just want to bring up briefly. The first one is the new website, and I do share concerns also with navigating missing information. We used to be able to go back all the way, I believe, to 2005 to see meeting agendas, meeting minutes, to that nature. We can't do that anymore. It looks like there's just a few years of record. And as I noticed, even a recently adopted resolution, Macaulay-Mooney Lee regarding condominium measures, consumer protection measures, was missing. So there's things that still need to be addressed. I know it's a work in progress, I hope, and that it's not finished. But there are many things that I share concerns about, and we'll get into that more in a written format. The second thing is regarding the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I've shared this before with the commission, and I'm just going to be very brief on this also. The Waikiki Neighborhood Board seems to be devolving. Decorum has been lost. There's personal attacks to myself and sometimes to others. And I'm not going to get into any further discussion on that other than just to reiterate that I brought this up before, and it's getting actually worse. The March meeting was the worst so far. And out of that meeting came three complaints against me where I've done nothing, and those are at the end of the agenda this evening. And I would like an opportunity to join, if possible, the executive session or the outside session with the group to be able to speak on that, if that's possible. So I'm not going to get into that here. I don't have enough time. But I am very concerned with what's going on with board members. There are numerous violations of the neighborhood plan and the sunshine law and decorum. And just, you know, I look at it, it's more of harassment at this point. All of that needs to stop. So I appreciate your time if there's an opportunity to join in that session. Thank you.
Okay, two things with regard to the new website. I don't know if Lloyd or you have any more comments you can make. If you can't. And the other thing with regard to the second part of our agenda, adjudicatory matters. We don't have any intention or plan to invite anybody in. If you want to hang around to see if we do, then we can contact you. But at this point in time, we don't have any plans to have you join that meeting. It is for just the commission. With that, Dylan, you have a, you want to respond to the topic about the website?
Yes, this is Dylan Witzel, Deputy of the Neighborhood Commission Office. Relating to the website, we are in a transition period with that. And, you know, we're not able to import all of the data as quickly as we'd like to. But it is a work in progress to get all of the digital files on there as we move forward. But everyone is more than welcome. So we do keep records of everything we have, both in physical form or if you ever want a copy of something. Until we can get everything online, you can always request records too. But it is available. It's just we have to continue working to get more stuff online.
Okay, thank you. I see another hand. Next.
Ed Fucioka.
Ed Fucioka.
Hello.
If you can turn on your audio, that will be helpful. And did, and your.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. We can't see.
Sorry, I'm trying to switch my headset. Do you see him on the webcam?
No, we don't see you yet.
Can I still go ahead and make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm a constituent of Neighborhood Board 18. And basically, my issue is I have a medical condition that prevents me from walking more than 10 minutes. So I'm not able to attend the board meetings. I've been trying to make it, but I can't. So in the past, the board was doing live video streams, but they stopped it. And I saw a board meeting that Chair Yooms decided to not allow live streaming, that all meetings are going to be live. So I've missed several announcements by the chair. One was the mayor's community meetings. Another one was meeting with the HPD commanders. And a third was a Genki ball toss into the canal behind the golf course. So I missed those announcements because the videos are not posted until one week before the meeting. So the last one was April 4th at Mona Loa High School to meet HPD commanders. And it wasn't posted till that day, so I missed the notice. So is there an ordinance that makes it mandatory to video stream the meetings?
I can respond to that. There is no ordinance to require that. It's been left up to the boards as to whether they have their board meetings all in person or on a hybrid basis.
Okay, so I should take my.
The agendas and the minutes of all of meetings are available prior to the meeting. And Dylan or Lloyd can confirm how long it takes for the video to be put onto the website from the last meeting that they have.
Yeah, so I did check the archived videos, and it always gets posted one week prior to the next meeting. So it's three weeks past, and I miss a lot of the announcements. So I even submitted testimony on speed bumps. But I checked the website and I listened to the media, and none of my testimony either reached the board or it went into cyberspace somewhere because I can't find it on the Neighborhood Commission site either. Should I bring up my concern directly to the chair with the live streaming?
Hi, Ed. Dylan Buck here from the Neighborhood Commission Office. Yes, you can reach out to us, and we could put you in contact with the chair. But they should have some form of public contact on our website available. So you don't need to go through us. But yeah, to answer your first question, there is a legal requirement to have an in-person location if you have a virtual component. But there is no requirement to have a virtual component for in-person meetings. So I do understand what you're talking about. And we do know that it does take several weeks for the elevo recording to be posted to their website. So I do hear what you're saying. We have been working with that for a while. I don't know that we can speed that up. It's contracted out, and they do a lot of editing. So I understand that you're missing announcements in between meetings. But best way would be to contact the board and the chair and see if they would consider. But ultimately, it is the board's decision if they want to do a virtual and in-person or just in-person.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. But next one was Larry Varey.
We see Larry Varey standing up. Larry, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, Chair Oshiro and commissioners. I want to put a shout out. I think the new website is taking form as a beta version. I'm a little concerned that normally when you build something new, you don't turn off the old one until the new one is built and it is sanctioned. Right now, I don't think any of the Neighborhood Board chairs were involved with any of that. And I wanted to ask you, did you give approval to turn off the old website? Because I myself need to do some research this last week, and I couldn't get to it, especially getting back to 2005.
Larry, if that's a question for me, the chair, I did not. I think I saw it when I looked at the website in the past week or so. But I can understand what the office is trying to do to try to improve and update the website. So it's not something that we have to. But if you have any concerns or questions about it, then you can put them on the table now. If we can respond.
I just did, Chair. I just been concerned that.
But I answered your question. So was there a second question, Larry?
I didn't think you answered my question.
Your question that I answered was, did I know about the change? I said I did not.
Okay. All right, I'll leave it at that. My concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just. Lloyd, you wanted.
Yeah, Larry, this is Lloyd, the executive secretary. What, can you just give me a call tomorrow? And then we can figure out if I can help you with what you need.
Yeah, it was very simple. You know, I think that if we had kept the old one going, we've got research available and everything because it's going to take you a while to transfer everything over. And I'm interested in the new website. I think bringing technology to bear, I think your creativity, innovation from your staff, all that. But you just don't turn off the old one. But thank you.
Thank, yeah, give me a call.
Larry, one of the things they didn't do, not everything is new. They did put in a photo of me that's, you know, I don't know, maybe over 10 years old. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but. Okay, we have another hand. Kevin, do you have another concern?
Thank you, Chair. I just beg to be a second time speaker if time permits.
Sure.
Thank you. Just a follow up from the website and looking at the list of meeting minutes. I did indeed find the minutes, the written record from February, which were edited during the March meeting. However, they don't appear to reflect the edits that were made and approved by the commissioners. And I know it hasn't quite been 30 days. Just want to make sure that with the new website system that the commission is still committed to keeping up with the 30-day internal requirement to posting updated, approved, amended meeting written records. And hopefully that'll be posted somehow. Thank you.
Chair, spell. Yeah, go ahead, Dylan.
Hey, Kevin, it's Dylan Buck. Please call me and email me tomorrow. I did those edits myself. I followed the recording exactly what you had proposed, which is what was approved. So I'm surprised to hear that, but let's talk, and we'll get that address. Thank you.
I see one more hand up. I think that's the last one. Is that it?
Yeah, Winston Welch.
Mr. Welch, you have the floor. Did you turn on your.
I'm Winston Welch, and I am Chair of Neighborhood Board Number Five. And I just wanted to express my concerns about, as others have, about the sudden change in the website. We don't know what information is missing. We don't know what's there. It seems like there's been so many things that just leave the community with a lot of questions and that's sort of a mismanagement. We should be, have been informed about this a long time ago in preparation for it. Maybe there are things that we wanted to download. We don't know what's there or what's not there at the end of the day. It's not great management. But beyond that, the Neighborhood Board Office is there to serve the Neighborhood Boards. And there's so many shortcomings that happen. We're just, many board chairs have been in contact with me. We're not feeling that we're being served by the board, but rather dismissed or sidelined, marginalized. As far as the survey goes, there was a survey done apparently last year. I don't remember getting it. Now, I was only chair since July, and Dylan Witzel was chair before me. I don't know if he passed that on to me. I honestly don't remember. I've had COVID two times since then. But regardless, where are those results? And is there any way we could find out if all of the board chairs and/or, you know, vice chairs were able to answer that? And if so, what would be raw, unfiltered answers so we could find out more information about that? But really, we need to have a full, you know, day of breakout sessions where we all sit down together and can come up with some things so that we're not in a position where we're feeling like we're not being served, but rather that we can work things out and feel that our voices are being respected because we are all dedicated members to our communities. And we need the support of the neighborhood secretary and, of course, the commission, but more the secretary. And I know your job isn't overseeing that, but I feel like a lot has just really slipped through the, not even the cracks, it's chasms at this point in the last few years. And that needs to be rectified for this, our Neighborhood Boards to function effectively. Because right now, there's just a lot lacking. That's what I'd like to say. So thank you for your time and listening to me today.
What board were you from, Mr. Welch?
Yes. Done.
He didn't answer. He's on five. Time in hand?
Yeah. Neighborhood Board Five, yes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Everybody's had their, an opportunity to review them. Second. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any discussion of minutes? Are there any objections to approval? God, I think it's approved. They're approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next item. Our committee reports of executive situation. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lloyd's report. Lloyd, Executive Secretary's report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Going back to some of the concerns that were heard. We have, I have an informational meeting with the chairs and the vice chairs scheduled for Monday, April 29th at 6:00 PM. I've already sent out the invite. We've had at least two dozen people reply that we need online. And while I will cover a number of things that are happening in our office, it is also, as we do every time we have a chairs meeting, a certain part of that meeting, probably the last half of the meeting, will be open for questions. And that's when the chairs get to ask what everybody wanted to ask. And it's always a very productive meeting because I think people get their questions answered, but they also get an update on where we at in terms of the office. Anyway, looking forward to the meeting, and then I think it'll be great. I've always wanted the opportunity to talk with chairs and vice chairs on a regular basis, just to talk.
I take it that's just for the.
Is that for chairs?
Just for the Neighborhood Board. So I take it we're on commission.
Well, I think if only two of you show up, it'd be okay.
So I invited two people.
No, you can, you're welcome to be there. Just don't talk business. That's all.
No, we didn't get notice. Just asking.
Yeah, you didn't get notice yet. But you will.
Snicker.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. May I ask a question?
Mr. Smith.
I would just express my concern that I'd really like to get more notice. I mean, I mentioned that in the past, but just, I know it's basically like a week for me. But for something like that, it would be helpful, just if you can.
Usually it's about a month in advance if you notice the commission, you know, the conference of chairs is what we call it.
Yes, and I will make it a point going forward to give everybody a month's. It's a month, okay?
Sorry, that would be great. So it wasn't a month this time, was it?
No. Two weeks.
Well, I'm just saying, if practical, if practical.
Boy, it's getting rough up here. You saw that. Yeah, you know, the challenge for me is every time I think about it, I reschedule it. And then I think about it and say, okay, let's go. And I reschedule it, and something comes up. So I just, it just, at this point, I just want to get it in before the fiscal year ends. But, but, point, yes. And I will, in the future, do one month.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, I'm not complaining. So I know that there are challenges, just as possible. Thank you. Okay, boy.
It was like a.
I can see.
That's fine.
Do you have any other questions? Sure. Commissioner, my life is. Are you done, Lloyd?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yes. I have a quick question for Lloyd. Do you have an agenda for your meeting?
Yes and no. I have a list. I have something that I'm going to send out. And basically, it's everything I want to talk about. It's sort of an agenda, but it's not written like an agenda. It's not a meeting, a formal meeting. And part of the reason is the group we have, which is the chair, is not a formal group. They're not created by law. They're not created by rule. So they, we are actually, I checked with our council. We're actually outside of the sunshine law. Because there's nothing the group can do to make a decision about anything. But I will, I will send out, I promised the chairs and vice chairs that I would send something out. I'll send it out either tomorrow or Wednesday. And it actually will be an outline of everything I want to talk about, which will end up being pretty much the summary of the meeting, which I always also promised that I would supply to them. Because a lot of times we have a meeting, and then you don't know what happened. Where you don't have anything written after that that goes over what was decided and was talked about. So, but yes, I will have something that will go out tomorrow at the latest.
Thank you. Please, you see all the commissioners?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Can you give us some broad ideas to what you're going to tell? If you don't have an agenda.
Yeah, no, I don't. Yeah, but it's just process. You know, we, I want to talk about, one of the things I want to talk about is managing your meeting. And we had, did a, we did a video on how to run the meeting. And I just want to bring it out and explain it and tell the chairs and the vice chairs that we plan to do more of these training videos that they can look at. And it's basically, one of the things that I, we need to do is make sure all the board chairs understand when you run a meeting, these are the things you need to do. You need to follow certain things. And while I emphasize again and again, and the kid through all the chairs, they don't always follow it. And the first thing is, if you say everybody's got two minutes, deceive it to two minutes. As we all know, it has a tendency to go on and on and on. And I think if we can do that, then things will be a lot more efficient. But it's just, it's just, it's just stuff that I want to talk about. One of the things I do want to talk about is the website, but I also want to talk about some of the challenges we have. And it's more like internal stuff that I want the chairs to understand. And looking at it going forward, I also want to talk a little bit, not so much about budget, but understanding the budget constraints that we are under. And it is, you know, I said it before, going into next year, the budget is a problem, and it's a problem for everybody. I don't care what level of government. It is a problem. And that affects everybody because there's not enough money sometimes to do things that we think we would like to do. And next year is going to be, from a city's perspective, is going to be a challenge on the budget because recently, they came out with an agreement, the state did, regarding hazard pay. And this has to do with COVID. So the state has this amount that they have to give their employees who work during COVID. And the city has to also comply. We're looking at probably over $100 million just there. And the problem is that affects everybody else because then the money, that money that you thought was available for something is not. But I just want everybody to just understand going forward that we're going to have a little bit of challenge with the funds. So everybody tighten their belt a little bit. It's just, it's just giving everybody an up-to-date on where we are at the office. But also, I want to open it up. I always open it up to the chairs and vice chairs for whatever question they have. And some of them have very specific questions, and some of them have a little broader. But I realize everybody's under different constraints. And I just want to hear from them if there's anything that they would like to ask me. The other thing I want to bring up is, I want to bring up this, what I will ask them, and I would continue to ask them, is I would like to know what they feel their major accomplishments are. And I say that because I know that every year I have to write a manual report. And the annual report says, okay, this is what you guys did. But I really would like to start highlighting some of the things the boards have done. I mean, I really am interested in publicizing the work of the board. And there are times, it's not big issues, but there are times that, you know, and I'm not saying every board has it, because every board is a different situation. Every community is different. Some communities are younger than others. Some are older. They're more mature. So it's different. But there are things that happen. And I would like to know, what do they think is important in their community? What do they think they accomplished? And it, you know, there was a, recently, there was a stop sign that was put in. And I think it was a Kiki?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would have, if we were all prepared, if my office was prepared, that would have been a newsreel. And the reason is that, if it's just a stop sign, but that intersection is a dangerous intersection. People have died there, you know? And the reason it's there, the stop sign, is because the board kept on it and kept on it and kept on it. And I think that's what is important for the community to know. Like, you know, so.
I think one of the things you can do about that is, you know, at every meeting, you have the neighborhood assistance that are there. So whenever things like that happens, they should report stuff like that back to you.
I get it.
Because, for example, talk about a, you know, a streetlight. I remember our board was talking about it four years before we finally got a streetlight put into a very dangerous street, an intersection. But it took four years of discussion. So, you know, it's not like it's something that's come out of the group.
Right.
Especially major projects. It may seem small, but it doesn't happen overnight.
No.
You should be able to get feedback from the NACE because they go through that every.
I get feedback. What I can't, what I haven't been able to do is act on it. You know, and what I wanted to do was like that situation, okay, then let's do a news release. Let's do a beauty news release. Let's do a news conference at that stop. You know, and we'll shoot it ourselves and then send it to the, to the, to the stations. But it's, it's for something that we could do that talks about the important work of the boards. And you write about the, about the forty days, four years to get something.
You can, besides major accomplishments, you also have major, um, items that are permanent community.
Right.
That has a lot of impact to the community.
That's right.
It may not be positive, it may be negative. But, uh, those things are discussed in the meeting. So, you know, any should be able to pick that up. And I give you an example. In our last meeting, we talked about the landfill in Waipahu. The city, the city was going to consider putting a landfill at the YPO soccer park. And we were all up in arms and opposing that. So thankfully, in the past week, the Navy, you know, took care of that, said the city can't do it.
Right.
So if you wanted news, things like that, I mean, it happens all the time.
I know, but how do I need to get it from you to the news station?
Well, that's the thing. Not everybody is communicating directly with you. So like I said, if you want to get hints of what's going on, they should be able to give you those kinds of tidbits.
Right.
And if you need to follow up with the respective board or chair, you know, by all means, you can.
Again, it's getting, I know of only, I get reports every day. The problem is how do I get that issue to the news station? That's what I really, I need to build my office to do that.
But I thought the city does that. Every time we get the, the news release, the press release, it comes from the communication office. So we get there to go do the follow up, right? No? I don't know.
They got, it's, it's better if we do it because we know it better and, and the priority is ours. Uh, the city's communications office is, they, they are busy. I mean, they got stuff going on all the time. Uh, they, if you get the news releases, they do one, two a day, and it takes a while to just put it together. So I just want to be able to control a little bit more, have our message go out that, you know, because of the neighborhood board, this was done.
Well, I, I don't know if you can always take credit for that in terms of the board, because a lot of community issues, it's not only the board, but it's the community at large. So.
Chair can make a comment. I, I actually have to say I support the chair. I'm sorry, the executive secretary on this. I think it's much better if, if you develop a, a pipeline to the news sources. And sometimes it's incredibly easy to get on the news. I had something in mind, but I was kind of shocked that they made that top story on a news station. So if you develop that pipeline, I think you're perfectly situated to do it. So I applaud your efforts and.
Thank you. But that's where we want, and that's why I just, I do get the information from the, from the N H's. Uh, but I also want to hear from the.
Can you issue those things out directly or do you have to go to the city's communication?
I can talk afterwards. Yeah, I might be saying things I shouldn't.
I would think every, every agency of the city, usually they coordinate first releases through their communication.
Yeah, I, I think.
Rather than every agency.
Right. And I think what it will be is that we develop it and the communications team, uh, in the mayor's office will send it out. Then they get out, it's, it's pretty easy. But, um, I, I think that's the way it will end up working. But again, we just need to get, we just need to start doing it and it'll be fine.
We did have a public question. If there is a more from the commissioners.
May further question? So who's that?
Right. Commissioner Malandres just raised his hand.
Okay, Commissioner Malandres, you have the floor? Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a, thank you very much. I have a quick item for Lloyd. Would you be so kind to take your agenda and run it by Chair O'Sherrill? Because sometimes when you present, uh, support what you're doing, but sometimes the chairs, when they hear you speak, they think you're speaking for the commission and you're not. You're speaking for the N C O office. So we want to make sure there's no conflict. So if you could put your agenda together, run it by Chair O'Sherrill before you present it, that'd be great.
Yes, I don't need to get approval for it. The, the data.
It's not approved.
Well.
We, we want to avoid conflict.
Okay. You will get it when I send it out.
We have Greg Mesakian.
Greg Mesakian, you have the floor?
Thank you. And I apologize. I didn't say earlier, uh, who I was, but I am Greg Mesakian. I'm the sub district two vice chair of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Um, I'm sitting here. I'm a little bit in dismay. I'm not sure. Maybe it's just because I haven't participated in many of these, um, commission meetings. But I wanted to address that, this question and a few questions to Executive Secretary Yanakah. So I'm trying to understand if, have we ever done this before or have you ever done this before, I should say, where you've met with, specifically with the chairs and vice chairs of all of the boards, without all of the board members present for a particular, it sounds like it's a training, informational feedback session. Have you ever done that before? That's the first question. I have a little bit more.
Oh, yes. Yes, I have.
Okay. Is there anything published regarding that? Is there any records of that, meeting minutes?
No, but I, I think if you want to, no, there's no meeting minutes, but.
I think the last meeting at our office is on.
Yeah, it's, yeah, Dylan reminded me, the last one probably is on our, on our, um, on the website. It's a YouTube video. Yeah. Well, but there, we, in the plan, there's something called a conference of chairs. Um, so anyway, yes.
Okay. So there is something in the neighborhood plan that addresses the conference of chairs, and it has the vice chairs listed also, if that's correct.
No, it's just a conference of chairs, but, um, but the vice chairs are, are invited, yes.
Okay. And then the other, uh, just to, to finish the questions, um, you, let me see if I have my question properly here. You talked about budget. You talked about a lot of things, but you know, the concern I, I have, and I don't know if the other chairs, vice chairs and board members, I'm speaking as a, a sub district two vice chair, but as a board member. But I think we all would want to participate in something where there's some kind of training, educational input, if you've got some insights to proper procedures. The chair today may not be the chair tomorrow. The vice chair today may not be the vice chair tomorrow. I think this is something that if it's possible, I mean, if you can invite the chairs and vice chairs of all the boards, why not all of the board members and maybe do it by hybrid or by Zoom and allow all of us to participate? So we're all on the same page. And, you know, you can limit some input time, but I think that's the way to do it, to approach it from a complete neighborhood board standpoint. So that's my comment with that. Now I'll leave that there so other people.
Okay, thank you.
I see. That's, that's all.
Okay.
Sure. So we. Chair, Commissioner Tom about Claire. Oh, Claire, you have, um.
The floor.
Yeah, I just have a comment. Um, I was on the website earlier today. Um, but I wanted to say, I think on the website, Lloyd, you can correct me and Dylan, you can correct me. But aren't there little, um, snippets of managing a meeting, uh, running a meeting, um, these kinds of things that they, people can tune into and get some additional training?
Um, yes, yes, there is. And what we're doing right now, we're trying to update a lot of stuff. Uh, you know, as, as we all know, the, you know, the laws have changed actually on, on meetings in terms of, uh, now we have, um, what we call, what we call hybrid, or they call the, boy, we call them remote game. Uh, so they, the, the meetings itself has changed. So we just want to update. And, and that's part of it for a new website. We just want to update everything, um, to, to reflect the present situation. But you're right. There, there's a lot of stuff up there already. Um, and I just want to go over it with the chairs again, and, and not to train the chairs at this meeting, but just to make them aware of what's available and what we'd like to see in the future. But yes, you're right.
Uh, Claire, you're muted.
Sorry. That is a starting point. They, people can start there and get some familiar, familiarity with the plan, running meetings, old minutes, um, some background information, right, for somebody who's new.
Yes, and I, you know, it's, from my perspective, um, I think everybody can start from reading the plan, reading the neighborhood plan, first of all. And second is the sunshine law has a special section for neighborhood boards and they can read that. And if, if, if anything, if you read those two documents, I think it'll answer a lot of questions that someone might have.
That's all we got, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we can now move on to our next item on the agenda, which was, uh, committee reports. Uh, do we have any report from the, uh, the elections committee, Claire?
Yeah, actually I decided I'd make a report. We are ten months into, um, our last elec, from our last election and our installation of our new officers on July one, twenty twenty-three. So our next election is July, our installation of officers is July twenty twenty-five. But, you know, there's a lot of plan that goes ahead and go forward that, going forward. We have not had a meeting as of yet, but I wanted to at least have the minutes reflect that we are going to start work on it and remind people that, um, they'll start thinking about candidates. There are, it's, the election is open to any residents, military personnel and their families, and legal resident aliens that live within the district or sub districts. You have to be eighteen years of age. There are no term limits, um, for years served, but each term of office is two years. Um, I think we also have to, uh, Dylan or Lloyd, if we can check with the boards that have over this last year, asked us for exceptions as far as they're not having their sub districts, uh, being just general membership, uh, people. As, just verify with them if they want to continue the general at large, or they want to go back to their sub districts. And then we'll probably look at, looking at an election monitor early of twenty twenty-five. But we won't, we'll probably start convening, um, just after July of twenty twenty-four, our elections committee. Any questions?
Any questions with Claire? Lloyd?
Uh, yeah, not a question, Claire, but I just letting you know, um, yeah. Um, let me know when you can sit down and talk a little bit about elections. Uh, we would, would love to visit with you and go over something.
Okay.
Hey, good. Patrick?
Uh, I, I just had a question about changing the sub districts. Uh, I'm kind of unclear as how that process is. So maybe that would, or how it would work, maybe if that's something you could explain to the neighborhood board chairs and, and, you know, at the meeting, you know, we don't do it now, but uh, just how we do that and say, for some boards, it would be nice if they have subsection elections to maybe say if they can't fill those within two or three months, that they could come from other, other subsections. So those type issues, just maybe some clarities, my explanation would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I will include that.
Okay, any other questions? If not, the survey committee, Stephen?
Um, yes, we had our last for recommittee meeting. I went over the items with everyone in the committee. Just, uh, my last comment at the end was any other additions or any changes, please email to me. I'd asked Dylan to please schedule a final meeting to final review of everything because the information on the survey has actually been static the last couple of months. Yours was actually the last item that needed to be input and that was done. So I'm just waiting for final review with the committee members and we'll present it to the commission for approval.
Chair. Dylan?
Yeah, Dylan here. So, uh, Commissioner Malandres, we did agree on, it was Monday, May thirteenth, correct?
Yes.
All right. So committee members, be prepared. I'll send out a agenda soon.
Thank you.
By David, thirteenth at six P M, this location and virtual.
Great.
Hey, questions?
Yeah, make a comment?
Uh, my hell, honey?
Um, I, I was at the, the meeting last week that, um, Commissioner Malandres called, and I was the only committee member present besides Commissioner Malandres. And I just wanted to comment that I did say that at this time, I do not support the current survey as it is, the survey as it is currently written. And I believe very strongly that now that we have a full committee with myself and Claire, who were appointed, uh, last October, Commissioner Malandres, John Ching and yourself, Chair O'Sherrill. I, I strongly believe that we should start again from the beginning and come together as a collaborative team to go over the purpose, goals and object, objectives of what this survey should be written about and how it should be written. So I just wanted to pass that on to you, Chair O'Sherrill.
Well, I think that, uh, as Commissioner Malandres indicated, he has another meeting on May thirteenth. So I think at that meeting, I think you can have more discussion on the survey. And I leave it up to the.
Right.
Survey committee as to moving forward. So if, if you can hopefully come up with a recommendation, if you feel that you need to take another look at, uh, what's been done already and need to work it well, it's, it's, uh, uh, up to you, you can make a recommendation. So, you know, if we haven't finalized anything yet, it's still a, a work in, work in progress. So I'll leave it at that and hopefully folks can figure out the next step in terms of movement forward.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've opened to suggestions. I've made a statement. Just email me what you have. We can discuss it. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments?
No.
We have two. Like you, we got Claire, Tom.
Oh, Claire?
Hi, um, Commissioner Malandres, I, I apologize for not being able to make your last survey meeting. She haven't made any of them, but you scheduled it the day I had my community association meeting. And, um, the May thirteenth one is okay. Um, it doesn't have any conflicts with me. And I think the point that Commissioner, sorry, like, I don't know her last name. But the former commissioner was trying to say was that sometimes it's harder. Uh, and, and we can flesh this out. It's harder to massage something that's already there if we're stuck in, um, stuck with working with the document. I think we have to look. I think what she, what we're trying to say is we have to look at what are the goals of the survey? And how do we address, what kind of survey do we want to send out to address those goals? So I, I don't think it's a matter of just massaging what we have, but maybe revisiting the whole entire thing.
Well, my response last time, the last meeting was, I don't want to scrap what the, is done from all the people that's put time into it. And we have concurrence with the other commissioners. We have, I've had a lot of praise and input from a lot of the, uh, uh, in this kind of meeting where, uh, where chairs are online. So I don't want to disrespect, disrespect the work that's already been done to date. But yes, we are open to, uh, suggestions. That's fine.
Chair, next question. Greg Mesakian.
I see Larry.
Greg had it first.
Okay, Mr. Mesakian?
No worries either way, but, um, thank you. I think you have an opportunity that you probably don't want to lose. Uh, earlier, Lloyd, you mentioned, uh, accomplishments. So you're going to have a, a session with the chairs and vice chairs and you were hoping to maybe ask them what their biggest accomplishment was. I think if you go back a year, probably. Um, I don't know if you'll do it a year or, or longer than that, it's a longer period. But here's an opportunity on the survey to ask all of the board members what they feel is their greatest accomplishment of their individual boards.
That's right.
And I, I truly hope that this is going to go out to all board members and we're not going to limit it to, uh, the chairs and vice chairs. And I believe that's what I heard at the survey meeting that I did participate in. So I was at that committee meeting and also, that, that's perfect. And the last comment I'll make, um, so I'm a board member of the Kukua Council and I've been on it for a couple of years. And I just recently adopted presidency. I didn't ask for it. It just became an ascension issue. And we do something at the state capital called the Good, the Bad and the Ugly. It's a legislative review. We're going to be doing it in May. So what we do openly, so the public can participate, is we want to hear the good accomplishments, um, the bad and, and the very bad. We want to know really from our legislators. And they sit at a table and we have an open session. What's, what they did for the year? Uh, you know, full disclosure, what my suggestion is, if it's not already done and it seems like you're going in that path, but I know that others are trying to persuade otherwise, make sure that the survey is incorporated. is incorporating positive, maybe mediocre and negative. You, you've got to be able to provide input to concerns with the boards themselves, maybe the chairs, boards and the N C O itself, and the N C O office, the executive secretary's office. Nothing personal. It's just all I hear are concerns and complaints quite often. And this is what you need to get back on the survey. So I appreciate the opportunity to mention that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see, uh, Larry Veres and Larry.
Yes, Chair Shiro and, uh, Commission. Um, wh- when, uh, Commissioner Melendez began to survey and I was, I was privileged to take that survey. Uh, it had clear objectives, clear mission. And it was based on providing constructive criticism from all the neighborhood board chairs. And I looked at this as a good feedback mechanism. I looked at it as a report card. And most importantly, we are one team across the board. And that was to improve the entire process with all these recommendations, suggestions that maybe some people haven't thought about. And regretfully, this is, this is month nine. What does that tell you when you start something that ninety days later, it should have been out and completed? I just don't understand why it was taken so long every single month. And I know some people were missing, they were absent, you know, that, that happens. But I just wanted to, just wanted to say that we don't need to take that survey over again. But, uh, but, uh, and the other thing, a lot of this comes up in conference of the chairs, which I totally support for Lloyd. Uh, that feedback is so important because he gets the fir- he's the first one to hear it usually. But, but if it doesn't get corrected right away, usually it festers. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to provide my constructive feedback back to you. I thought it was, it was a good survey, well said, but I haven't seen the survey the results of it and it's nine months later. Thank you.
Yeah. Right.
Out. Yes, sir.
Is the, um, Chair O'Shiro, is there a specific time limit on, on the survey, the development of the survey?
I think what needs to be. There, there's no, there's no timeline. I think it's a matter of, um, it's been going on more than a few months for the past year, I'd say. So, um, I think it's, it's, uh, raise the awareness of everybody and everybody is waiting to see, you know, a, um, a survey that is ready to go out. So, um.
Right.
So hopefully you'll get closer to that.
Well, with the, with the current committee now
Yeah.
of five. But now I feel that we can really come together and collaborate and work together to develop something that is effective with a full committee of five. Because when we received the survey initially in October, if I am correct and correct me in twenty twenty-three, I did not find any survey committee meeting. And at that time, the survey committee consisted of Commissioner Melendez and John Ching. So that's not much of a committee to work with. And by the time that we did receive the first draft, who wrote that draft, the first draft? There wasn't any oversight to or development of that. And so now I'm, I'm stressing that we have a full committee that's really look at it. I personally don't really understand the purpose, the goals and the objectives, because it hasn't been discussed with the new committee that we have. And there was only one meeting in January. So February, uh, last week, Monday was the second meeting. We're going to do this with three meetings and massage a survey that was written a few months back by a committee of two and one, no committee meeting available last year. I would have loved to have sat in on those committee meetings, even if I wasn't on the committee, just to take a look at what was going on with it. So I, I really strongly feel that with a committee of five, we can really pull together and create something that can be very effective and answer the questions that our neighborhood board, uh, boards have and, and get down to what they need and what the N C O needs and what everyone needs as a whole. Just a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we need all committee members to show up. There were months that people didn't show. So let's show up and let's talk about it. Thank you.
Now, I would add, I would add also that, I mean, we did have, um, they intended a couple of meetings, I think Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Clark to our survey meetings, as they did also to the David Plant Committee. So, you know, uh, there was two meetings. They weren't on the committee, but they came and we, we don't, uh, we.
We discussed it.
But Commissioner is available to, to, to show up. We haven't, um, and I understand, I think, so I'm sorry, but still.
I, yeah, I, I think, I think what is important also to understand that the the committees are subject to the full commission.
Right.
They work for the full commission effectively. So if you have a committee meeting, whatever you decide you want to do, needs to come back to the full commission to decide, yes, go ahead. So technically, what should happen is that the committee will develop a a survey and then provide the survey to the commission, say, this is what we would like to do. And the commission votes, at that point, it gets sent out. I mean, that is the process, just, just so we understand. Um, and that is a normal process for all committee on all boards, that the committee goes to the full board or in this case, the commission before it goes out. Just so we know the process. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you again. Their
Thank you.
meeting is May thirteenth. Survey Committee. So we can move on to neighborhood plan committee, uh, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Uh, the committee plans to meet this month will review our, uh, list of the, our nominees that we have thus far. Hopefully we can make some sort of recommendation to the, uh, next meeting of, uh, the commission. Uh, if any of the commissioners have any suggestions, please let me know as soon as possible. We're trying to kind of will, or maybe, uh, get information about any potential, uh, candidates for the committee. So please let me know. Other than that, we will report back next month. Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, for the commissioners? On the David Plant Meeting? If not, uh, I see Larry Veres and, Larry?
Yes, Chair Shiro. Yeah, I wanted to ask, uh, who was selected for the neighborhood, uh, plan revision committee?
Uh, that just, excuse me, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
If that commit, if that decision has not been made, we have not discussed it in committee yet, that should come up before the next commission meeting that next month. So probably early in May, we'll have a meeting and make our recommendations. And then of course, as, as the executive secretary said, it's up to the commission itself to make that decision. And that has not been done yet.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anything else, uh, with regard to neighborhood plan? If not, we are at the next item, which is announcements. Our next meeting of the neighborhood commission is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. I think that's because of Memorial Day holiday.
Yeah.
We're going to do it on Tuesday.
That is, uh, recess may occur depending on what's on the table. We can focus the time on the two committee meetings that are happening today.
So that's subject to confirmation.
Yeah.
That's the current plan. So at this time, we're going to be adjourning the, this portion of the meeting, Sunshine Meeting portion, and then the commissioner will go into its adjudicatory, um, session following this portion of the meeting. So when we gavel out and everybody will be asked to leave the the meeting except for commissioners.
That's.
So with that, if there are no further announcements, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.